Good evening. I would like to call this December Bryan City School Board of Education to order. We'll start first with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone. Thank you for being here. We'll start please with the goal.
Scott?
Here.
Syndra?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
Next, you had an opportunity to see the regular November school board minutes. If you see no corrections or anything, I will take a motion to approve those. Thank you Scott.
Okay.
Thank you Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
I am not aware of any public participation this evening, so we'll go straight into communications. Something that I look forward to seeing moving on as the year progresses is our student spotlight. And tonight, we are going to have our student spotlight about Christmas for kids. Mrs. Cox.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks anyhow.
I'm Rachel Mannan, the pre-K through second grade school counselor.
And I'm Sarah Huwer, the third grade three through five school counselor. So we're just gonna talk about Christmas for kids. This is Rachel and I, this is both our just second year, so we're just learning about Christmas for kids here at Bryan. Christmas for kids is a joint fundraising effort sponsored by the radio station Mix 98.1 and the Herman Hustle Short detachment number 758 of the Marine Corps League. Every year, this campaign provides nearly 5,000 children from Defiance, Williams, Henry, Pauling, and Fulton Counties with Christmas presents. All monies donated by the Bryan City Schools are kept here in Williams County. In our ninth year celebrating, Christmas for Kids was held November 18th through the 22nd with a live drive broadcast at Bryan Elementary on December 2nd. Christmas for Kids is a wonderful opportunity for students to learn the positive feelings that come from helping others and a great way to kick off the holiday season. And I know Rachel and I always have a ton of fun with it. Especially last year, we would dress up and go into classrooms every day and collect the money and spend some time each day counting the money, but it really is a lot of fun for us and for the kids.
And for the teachers as well.
And for the teachers, yeah, they enjoyed the competition.
They did. The Bryan Middle School and High School, they had penny wars, dress up days such as mismatch day, neon day, pajama day, festive day, and Bryan spirit day. They had student and staff competitions. Students raised around 1,500 with staff raising 780, which totaled to be $2,300. For Bryan Elementary, we had homeroom competitions. Pre-K through second, the winning class was Mrs. Schrader. For grades third through fifth, there was a three-way tie. Mrs. Cordy, Mrs. Klingeman, and Mrs. Malanga, and they each had a pizza party that was last Thursday.
I've been wondering how there was a three-way tie. So we did, we would let each homeroom know how much their homeroom made, but we wouldn't let the homerooms know how much every homeroom made so that the teachers couldn't just donate to match it. But some of our teachers, as you can see, got kind of competitive, which was really fun, and they wanted, so they went to other teachers to see how much they made, and so the teachers then put in money to match so that they would all tie. So it was still fair, but it was fun for all.
And I think the third through fifth grade raised $270 per class for the winning classes. In elementary, raised around $3,600. This was when we had the live drive. Josh Bush, and then we had some of our students who raised the most monies. We had several kids collect money throughout the whole year themselves and raise those monies, and those are the students.
Some of the kids, they brought in quite a bit of their own money, which was pretty impressive.
And these are the winning classes that enjoyed the pizza party. And then these are just some fun pictures of the students dressed up.
Everybody always loves pajama day.
Pajama day is always the favorite of the students.
And staff.
And so each year, Christmas for Kids happens in December. Sometimes we raise money in November, but, or December, depending on when we have a live drive. And the money raised stays in Williams County, just like another program Bryan Elementary has. We have the bear bag program where we supply food for families each week. We started off with 20 families. Right now, we are up to 45 families. And to have that, we have $400 a week that are being put in the book bags. And it's from elementary and the high school students, and they have to sign up for these bags.
Okay, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Do you have a running total of how much you've collected over all the years for Christmas for Kids?
We do.
We do.
Well, and I've, it's, yes, we do. Each year, it's about, it's approximately been the same. It was a little lower last year, but it's been roughly the same each year.
Around $6,000 or $7,000 a year.
Good. Okay, any other questions?
So speaking of the bear bags, so if there are community members that are interested in giving to that program, is there a method by which they could participate in that?
They could contact us at the SAW.
Alright.
And figure things out.
Okay, okay. So cash donations or?
Cash donations.
If they wanted to write a check, it would be Bryan Elementary PTO bear bag.
And Rachel, that $400 a week is for 40 families?
It's like roughly $10 a book bag.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much ladies for your time and presentation. Thank you. It's always good to hear how our students are getting involved. Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to Ms. Emma Cipatrik from Miami Valley Planning Organization about our Safe Routes to School grant.
Okay, so Emma Cipatrik from Miami Valley Planning Organization. Just here to talk to you about the Bryan Safe Routes to School travel plan that we've been working on since, you know, the spring. So just to give you an overview of what Safe Routes to School actually is, it's a federally designated program for grades K through E just to create safe, convenient, and fun opportunities for kids to walk and bike to school. So it has two main goals. So where it's safe to get kids walking and biking, to encourage them, and then where it's not safe to make changes. So the program's important, and it's been going on for a long time because it helps to increase physical activity, it improves some of those unsafe walking conditions, and then it can ultimately improve air quality by taking vehicles off the road when more people are walking and biking. So our Safe Routes to School team, we have a few members in here now. Karen and Mark have been really helpful as part of our team, but we have some others from the city, the health department, some from public safety, we have representatives from the fire department and the police department, and some community members too, and a lot of teachers who are also parents, so that's been really helpful. So our goal with the team is just to improve the safety and security of walkers and bicyclists they choose to do that, to get to school. So Safe Routes revolves around the five Es. So engineering, they look at making improvements within two miles of the school. They're not really expecting kids to walk farther than two miles, so that's kind of the focus. Though where the school is really does include a lot of the city. And then education, encouragement, like Safe Walk and Bike to School Day, and then enforcement, just doing targeted enforcement. And then evaluation, just looking at before and after implementing countermeasures. So our target schools are just the Bryan Elementary School and the middle school. The travel plans usually have, they can have up to four schools in one plan. So our vision is just a safe, secure, and connected non-motorized transportation system that will enable kids to walk and bike to school. So the actual school travel plan, we started developing this plan in the spring. It's one of the requirements if you do want to apply for grant funding. So it's an actual written document outlining community's intention for enabling kids to participate in active transportation, just walking and biking. And some of the first things we gathered while kids were in school, with student travel tallies, that was just collected during a normal school week for a couple days. The teachers just asked kids how they arrived at school and then how they were getting home. And we found from that that approximately 4% of students were walking and then 2% were biking. They also sent out parent surveys just to gauge parent opinions on kind of like some safety issues. There's kids that they felt like they wanted them to walk and bike or if they were already doing that. And then the walk audits, that was just to observe student arrival and dismissal during a school day to look at behaviors on in the built environment. And then that graph just shows how many students actually are living within two miles of the school, so that'd be kind of the target area. And then parent concerns from the survey, the amount and speed of traffic along the route was a big concern. And then the safety of intersections and crossings, and then the lack of sidewalks or pathways and distance. So from all that data collection and working with our team, we've been meeting pretty much every month since then. So we developed some of what we thought were the key issues. So motor is driving too fast on campus, which the school's already made some improvements to try to curb that with their removal speed bumps. And then lack of signage for some speed limits and just where pedestrians or cyclists are crossing. And then the main one was the lack of pedestrian infrastructure, so mainly just connecting to the neighborhood by the school campus, and then to be able to get over to Main Street in the east side of city of Bryan City as well. So as part of that, there's the non-infra structure and then infrastructure countermeasures. So for non-infra structure, that focuses more on education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluation. So just looking at some ways to incorporate that, like Safe Routes to School lesson guides and Walk and Bike to School Day. Also looking at targeted enforcement, working with the police department, and then doing the parent surveys again and the travel tallies once some countermeasures are implemented. So I also, this is on the back of your handout too, just so you can see it better then. So after a lot of back and forth, we've had several meetings, we really wanted to try and include all the infrastructure projects that we were thinking about. So since our last meeting, I did add a little bit more on the east side of Bryan. So everything else is, those are mostly just sidewalk projects. The school campus itself is pretty new, so you guys have pretty good infrastructure already in it. But I did put some just for signage there, and then they're labeled like that just to phase out the projects so that we can maximize what we apply for, for funding. Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. So speaking of funding opportunity, the ODOT Safe Routes to School grant, those are due on March 6th. So with our plan, we can basically apply for the sidewalks that are within that plan just based on, we'll see, I guess, what, which ones we'll actually pick. But it's 100% reimbursable funding, so that's rare. Usually in a grant program, there's no match requirement. And they'll fund up to $400,000 for the infrastructure, so we can do a good chunk of the sidewalks. And then the construction year wouldn't be until 2023 or 2024, but in the meantime, if you apply for those non-infra structure projects, just to implement those programs and policies, and do some encouragement and education activities, you can apply for up to $20,000, and that would be available by next school year. So in conclusion, I'm just wrapping up the plan right now. We just had a meeting recently, and I'm just gathering the last pledges of support for our plan. I still need one, I think, just from the city, but they had to pass it at city council. And then I have it out right now for public comments until January 13th, so it's available on our website if you guys are interested in looking at the actual document. And then I'm gonna submit the final plan to the Ohio Department of Transportation. It shouldn't take them too long. Once they approve it, we'll get the grant application open, and we can apply for funding for both the infrastructure and non-infra structure. And I'll just, it'll probably go through the city, but they're able to do the cost estimate for us too. So that's all I have. Are there any?
Can I go back to that real quick?
Sure.
Any questions? Questions or?
Well, I would just offer a comment that I'm really excited about this moving forward. I live here in the neighborhood, not too far from the school, and I sometimes do walk to meet my grandsons, who a lot of times walk or ride bikes. And I know just from neighbor, talking to neighbors in the community, neighborhood where I live, that there's been concerns for safety of our students and the number of students that seem to be in the street versus having some other options. So just thank you and look forward to how this might move forward. I think it's a great idea. We needed to look forward to this. I guess one other question would be, I know until it gets costed out and bid out, we don't know, but do we anticipate that there will be enough funds to cover everything we've looked at here, or do we?
We have talked to Andy Waterston from the city. He already has a lot of it estimated because the city's been looking at a lot of the sidewalks. So he said a fair amount, I think. They'll have to kind of decide. You know, maybe we could get matching funds in a different way to kind of complete it, but I think a lot of the connections, at least closest to the school, which are sort of the priority anyway, we could probably do.
And I would say thank you for those speed bumps or the, whatever those terms is. For those, because again, I know that speed on campus has been something that I firsthand observed and has been concerning, and anything we can continue to do to monitor that is definitely something we want to consider and look and do.
Any other questions?
Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Good asset once it all gets, when it all gets taken care of.
And hopefully, I guess Karen and Mark might have more updates. We'll be meeting in February to finalize the grant application too. They can probably let you know then too.
You're more than welcome to stay and with us for the meeting, but we understand. We'll be enjoying it. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't slam the door.
There you go, now that you're not sitting there.
Alright, we shall move on to the treasurer's report, please.
Thank you. At Farmers and Merchants, we have on account $3,710,163.31. Outstanding checks and other adjustments are a reduction of $519,781.82. Investments at Star Ohio, $932,165.90. Star Ohio Plus, $2487,47.25. State Bank, $6438,768.83. UBS Financial, $4350,896.61. For total investments of $14,208,878.59. Total petty cash and change funds, $7,400 for a total fund balance of $17,466.80. Major funds at the end of November were the general fund at $12,699,739.4. The bond retirement fund, $1617,714.61. And I will note, the bond payments were made after that, so that fund is significantly less at this point in time. And the permanent improvement fund, $1663,166.90. In addition, the normal reports are in your packet. You will notice however, that they are different looking because we have now switched to the state software redesign. That went live for us on December 3rd. As you may remember, the state is in the process of moving all school districts from the classic state accounting software to the redesigned state software. The goal being to have all the districts there in, in two years from now, but we are very much enjoying the new state software as we're getting accustomed to it. So if there's any questions on any of those reports, I'd be glad to discuss them now.
I was just gonna come in, I like the font. I can read it.
Yeah, we are.
Nice and crisp to read it.
We are thrilled at the reporting abilities and look forward to exploring them more in the future. So moving on, we have a lot of donations to recognize tonight. We received $1,500 from Marvin Reddick for the orchestra, $1,500 from Marvin Reddick for choir, $500 from Newland Quest for band, $1,000 from Newland Quest for choir, $100 from Georgia and John Seltzer for youth in government, $500 from Newland Quest for youth in government, $100 from newcomer Schaefer, Spangler, and Brenninger for youth in government, $50 from Gallagher and Roars for youth in government, $100 from Newland Quest for computer insurance, $300 from Newland Quest for wrestling, the wrestling team, $300 from Newland Quest for the student assistant fund, and $300 from Mr. Lupo and Mrs. Knight for choir robes. And we thank each of them for their generosity.
That's a nice list of donations. Are there any questions for Kevin? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendations. Thank you Tom.
Scott.
Thank you Mike.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Moving on, I'll call your attention to the organizational meeting that will be taking place on January 6th, 2020. And at this point in time, we need to have you appoint President Pro Tem to open that meeting and take us through the election of the board president for next year.
Moving forward, I think for the president, can I make the motion? Show me some light.
No reason why you couldn't.
You can make the motion. After doing some, looking through items and whatnot, since I think the president moving forward might be our current vice president, I would like to nominate our president, Pro Tem, for the purpose of our organizational meeting to Scott. If he will accept that motion.
Oh, wait a minute.
Can I say something Kevin?
I was gonna say, Scott looks a little shy. Again, this is just to take us through the election of the board president.
Okay. My motion to Tom second, do you need an other?
Nope. Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott? Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you. And then just again, as reminders, at the annual organizational meeting, we will elect the board officers. Then we will administer the oath to those officers. We will need to look at the board service fund and have it established. We'll appoint board committees. We will establish the regular meeting schedule for 2020, and we'll review the board's membership in the Ohio Scoreboard Association for consideration. Any questions on the agenda for that organizational meeting? And then, of course, we will move then directly into the January regular meeting at the conclusion of that. And that's all I have for you, Miss.
We have a place to motion to move in second, but we do not need to do that because those were just discussion points.
Correct.
Correct? Under old business.
Under old business, last month, Mr. Rary presented to the board members the proposal for personal finance as a graduation requirement moving forward, beginning with the class of 2024. Because we're preparing to schedule for next school year already as we come back from the holiday break, we kind of need to have some discussion. And then if the board is favorable in moving forward, I do have that listed as a motion later, but we wanted to give the board any chance, if you have any further questions for Mr. Rary or myself regarding the personal finance graduation requirement, or if you have any comments on that.
I'm excited to see it happen, to hear how it moves forward.
I as well. The one thing I was gonna ask, is it just after reading this, is it just Mr. Keel doing it?
Right now, he's our certified teacher in that area. If necessary, we would look to see what other possibilities we might have. It'll all depend on how many students are enrolled in the course and how often we need to, or how many sections we need to have each semester.
Staffing will depend on enrollment in all of the courses we offer. So we always have to look to see what courses are getting the most demand and then appropriate staffing and licensure from that point.
But there's been a requirement. Do you see it being? Everyone's gonna have to take this.
Yeah, so we estimate probably about three periods each semester will fill up. Maybe a fourth period, again, depending on how many students, those upper grade levels, want to take this course as well without it being a requirement for them. So that would fit almost within his schedule right now, and if not, we look to see how we can make that work.
Okay, are we on to new business?
Okay, under new business, because whomever the board chooses as the four county career representative will need to get their January organizational meeting for them, we need to approve our committee person in this month, which is just a little earlier than the organizational meeting. So we do need the board to select a representative to represent the community of Bryan at four county on their board.
So I would make a motion to appoint Syndra Keeler as our representative to the four county board moving forward.
And I would second that.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
I'm staying.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations Syndra.
And thank you for agreeing to serve in that capacity.
Look forward to continuing on.
Now you, you'll still have to send us your four county board report.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Okay.
The one other thing too, that just for the general public to know, that you can have a non-board member filling that role.
Correct.
As Tim Meister sent us, the members of the Joint Vocational School Board District can either be a current elected board official or they can have the individual who has experience or knowledge regarding the labor needs of the state, the region, and understanding of the skills, training, and education needed in current and future employment opportunities in the state. And with Syndra already having done this for so many years, I think it's only natural that she continues to do that with the fact that we've accepted that. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just to give a clarification, that appointment is for a two, one-year period or two-year period?
Is it? I believe it's just a one-year period.
I believe it's a three-year.
Oh, three-year?
Three-year, 2020 to 2023.
Okay, well there we go. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, we'll hang that there too.
Very good, thank you. Typically, our appointments are only a year at a time. Okay. But you certainly could fulfill that term, that seat. Alright, any other questions? Okay, under administrative recommendations, I'm asking the board to approve two overnight trips, and I'm asking the board to do this in arrears. So my apologies. These two, we became aware of these plans to spend overnight after our November board meeting. So these two trips have happened. I did speak with Syndra and filled her in. The BG honors trip is a trip we do every year. We have students that are selected to participate in a full-day clinic to improve their skills as musicians, and then they do a performance the next day. And then our swim and dive team did a trip to Cleveland to a new relay meet, was all relays, and actually had a great experience there, which I'm sure the flight director will talk about a little bit later. So again, my apologies, that timing was off. We've kind of clarified again, so we will have some overnight trips. So we will have some overnight trips coming in for approval prior to them taking place. As we mentioned just a few minutes ago, I, it is my recommendation, and I also agree that this is a great move for Bryan City Schools to, uh, approve personal finance as a graduation requirement, beginning with the class of twenty twenty-four. We also have the approval of our six-to-twelve curriculum guide for the school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, which again, um, will start, um, sharing with students and parents following the holiday break. So you have those exhibits for you if you have any questions.
If not, I will take a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
Scott.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Syndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under student commendations, we congratulate, we have Nate Miller, who was Division Four quarterback, first-team All-Ohio. Division Four Connor Arthur as defensive back for third-team All-Ohio. Four County Career Center Students of the Month. We have our twenty nineteen O M E A D-one junior high honors orchestra members and our high school honors orchestra members listed. And again, just another opportunity for our students to receive state recognition. And we are very excited for them. And then our P-K-five campus, we have our Gold Slip winners for November and our P B I S sportsmanship winners, Mrs. Shilling and Mrs. Boyer's classrooms. Under personnel recommendations, uh, we have Harley Kinzer as classified substitute, certified substitutes Cecilia Fox and Julia Brown. Contract staff, so we have Dee Collins, um, which you approved back in November to work up to ten hours a month. Um, and then, uh, we actually amended that up to fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifty a month, thank you. We did it ten hours per week, didn't we? Okay. Um, but we are going through a website and school app redesign. And as part of that process, Dee is working to copy all of our forms, our links, our information, and transfer it from the current website company into the new company that we're working with. And that's gonna take a lot of man-hours. So we're asking for an additional, she doesn't think she will use all of this time, but additional hours just for January, February to get us through that launch. And those are, hours are paid at tutoring. And she works on her own time, um, outside of the normal school day. And then we have our retirement. So we wish and congratulate Lyndon Spees on his years of service with the district. And he will be retiring as of May thirty-first in twenty twenty, at the end of this school year. And he is currently our physical education teacher at elementary school. Questions on any of those?
If not, I'll take a motion to approve the personal recommendations from the superintendent.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Scott.
Yes.
Syndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under policy items, you see the policies listed here that are recommended changes by Neola. These were the second reading. So we will need a motion and a second on those. And then I do wanna speak just about the first reading of board policy as well. Fifty-one twelve governs when students are eligible for kindergarten. And there's an ongoing debate, um, within schools in the county on what is the right and appropriate age. And so our current date is listed as September thirtieth, which means any student, um, up until that date, or once they turn six on that date, correct, Mrs. Cox? Then they must attend kindergarten. We're finding that a lot of students aren't yet ready. And the, many of the county schools have moved that eligibility date back to August first. That, we think, will help students be more kindergarten-ready, be more ready to meet the standards that are now expected in kindergarten in terms of reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. And our teachers are very supportive of this change. So that is only a first reading. That is not part of tonight's motion if you choose to accept the others. But I did wanna bring that to your attention because that is the new, new request that we've just researched in the past month. The other policies, we went over, um, you've had in your packets, you've had the changes. Again, this is addressing the seatbelt request by the Betts family for, um, trips using charter buses that will require seatbelts. It's, uh, also addressing the tobacco policy on campus. Um, we are a tobacco-free campus, but this cleans up some of the language, which will get us a, a higher rating by the Ohio Department of Health. Talks about drones, new technologies. Questions on any of those policies?
So just to clarify on the entrance requirement, students would have to have already turned five by August?
By August first.
You would just send about six years of age, I was a little confused, but it was.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I just wanna make sure I was right.
Yes.
So rather than turning five sometime in August or September, then you will have had to have already turned by?
By August first. Yes, thank you.
And who made that rec- is that our recommendation or is that a?
That came from the teachers.
Our teachers.
Our teachers are asking for that change.
And it's an option that the state has had out there for a while, correct?
Yes.
Cause I know other districts in the county.
Other districts in the county have ever, already changed it.
Correct.
Right, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the second reading of the list of policies that are up on the screen there or on the computer, um, per Neola's recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
Sir.
Thank you, Scott.
Syndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we'll do a second reading in January for the kindergarten.
Okay. We do not need to move on that.
Right now.
Correct. Okay. Points of information.
Actually, um, I do not have any legislative finance updates at this time. I'm going to reserve, however, some time under discussion. I'm actually gonna just cut back in after the administrative reports. So I'm going to, we have the dates for the regular and organizational meeting, January sixth. And our business advisory committee will meet on January fifteenth. And we're gonna start with our athletic director report.
Well, thank you. And I boosted again at the top there, all of our winter sports coaches. And we'll wrap it up this semester. But the holidays is a, just a huge couple of weeks there for our, our sports teams and some of their competitions. And some of their, I guess, some of their main competitions as far as, uh, really getting out there and seeing where they, where they're at in line with some of the best in Northwest Ohio. This coming Saturday, we, we, we started off with, our swimmers are at the Northwest Ohio Classic at B G S U. There's fifty-nine teams there for, over Friday night and Saturday. Um, wrestlers are at Edgerton Invite on Saturday. The bowling, we have, we're hosting our own bowling invitational on Saturday. And then it's just a, a long day of basketball, you know, in our gym. Starting with junior high girls against Springfield at eleven AM. And then it's seventh, eighth grade there. And then it's girls JV varsity with Springfield at one and two-thirty. Then boys' basketball will take over at four forty-five with ninth JV and varsity. So if anyone wants to see good basketball, Saturday, our gym's the place to be. Um, and then the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, it is another really, really busy time. The wrestlers are at the Defiance Border Wars Tournament. There's forty-two teams gonna be over there on, on campus there in, in Defiance. And there's schools from Indiana, Michigan, Wisconsin, and Ohio that are gonna be there. Uh, the, the Defiance Holiday, Defiance College Holiday Basketball is now called the Groom Family Holiday Classic for boys' basketball. It's Brian, Pauline, Tenora, Wasean. We are set to play at Defiance College on Friday, the twenty-seventh, against Tenora at six PM. That same day, the JV will play, uh, at Paul, will play at Pauline. That's what, they're gonna host the JV, the JV games against Tenora. Um, the twenty-eighth is, i- if we win, the varsity will play at five PM. And if we lose, then they'll play at three PM. JV, if they win, they'll play eleven-thirty at Pauline. If they lose, they'll play at ten AM. And that's the same day as like the, the, uh, the NCAA playoffs. So they kinda moved all those times up a little bit to accommodate some certain fans. And, uh, we'll find out more information, uh, and, uh, meeting with them on Wednesday just to s- just to get, I guess, finalized, but that's where we stand as of right now. December twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, our girls' basketball. It's the Image Pro Holiday Classic here at home with Brian Fairview, Pauline, and Striker. JV will play first against Striker on the twenty-seventh at three fifteen. And our varsity will play Striker at five forty-five. The twenty-eighth on Saturday, even earlier in the day here. We have, uh, the JV, if they win, they'll play eleven fifteen. If they lose, they'll play at ten AM. The twenty-eighth, the varsity will play at one forty-five if they win Friday night. If they lose, they'll play at twelve thirty. So that's a busy, busy schedule of, of athletic events over the holidays. Now, on our, our clever touch here, we have the athletics page brought up there. If we go to down where it says Arbiter Live, this is the most up-to-date schedule that we have. And it's all based off of the, the contracts that we have online. So if you just go to maybe Boys Varsity Basketball, it's gonna be the most up-to-date that we have unless, I guess, there's, there's, there's two ways here. If another school has not, when they, when they logged in a, the contract on the system, if they did not check on their, to post it, then it will not post. Or if they not, if they have not accepted the contract yet, then it will not be on there. But other than that, the system right here, this link is, is up-to-date as we have cause it's based on the contracts that we had with the other schools. And it, we'll just go down through there and it just shows you where we're at, what we have. And there should be directions.
I was gonna say, if you click on there, it goes to the direction.
It should have directions for it, yes.
Oh, that's just wrong.
It's all through the Arbiter system. And, yeah, there's just a couple, couple ways. Maybe it's not up-to-date if they have not checked on there, when they, when they add the contract, to add it, to post it, or if they have not accepted the contract yet. So we're kinda met varsity if we have a school sometimes that do those things. But it should be good to go otherwise. Other miscellaneous that, that we have, um, we, we, we hosted our, our signing day event in November. We're gonna have another one in the spring. The date to be determined, we may hold off until April to let some of the other seniors make their, make their decisions. Then we, we, we just have one more. And then we're, we're looking to have another N W O L Student Athletic Leadership Conference for freshmen, sophomores. Uh, something like early May. We're, we're trying to deal with, with, with all the testing and everything that, that all the schools have and in our, in our conversations back and forth. Some schools may be tested this week in April or, or that week in April. And it's just something that we're, we're trying to narrow down a date right now to host this. It'll be back at, at, at Souter Heritage Inn. And we'll focus more on the, the underclassmen this time. So, any questions for me? It is, it's, and it's really tough competition too. I mean, everything's really good, but it's just really amped up to another level. And the swimming, this is, this is a big one. The one down in, in, in Bay, it was called the Bay Rocket Relays. It was held at, at, uh, Hudson High School. And then it was all D-one and sub-D schools, D-two schools with, with Avon, Avon Lake, Rocky River. I think Padawat, there was just ten or eleven schools there. And they, they got some really good competition early. So I know the coaches were very, very happy with, with that, with, with that relay.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bassett.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, just wanted to bring some attention. We've had that too this year, um, to have some trains for our pairs, our pair professionals. You know, we do a lot of training with our, with our teachers and other staff members. But our pairs were kinda lacking. So we threw this out there. And, and, and just what a great response we've had. We're offering a class, uh, once a month, just for an hour. With, with their turnout. And just, I, I thank our pairs for that. We've had twenty to twenty-five pairs coming, staying after, start at four o'clock. Maybe they have some bus duties or whatever. They're coming, they can spend it from four o'clock to five o'clock. Um, just learning, uh, about their job. Uh, we've had offered sessions on de-escalation of kids. We've offered some, uh, classes on roles of classrooms and teachers and how the pairs fit in. Uh, we've offered some special education training for them because a lot of times they are dealing with our special education population. And we kinda just say, hey, here you go, here's your kiddo, and follow the teacher's lead. But I think they really appreciate that. Um, a- and we appreciate their turnout, that they're, they're showing up and they're willing, willing to learn. Um, third grade fall testing, we tested, um, in October. Those results were released today, so they're very, very preliminary. Um, just kinda digging into them today. It looks like about forty percent of our kids, um, were passed, passed the test, were proficient. Once again, this is the end of third, third grade test that we give to them in October. Um, that's up about four percent from last year. What I'm more excited about is sixty percent of the kids, it appears, met the third-grade reading guaranteed promotion score already. Um, you meet that through, it's a seven-hundred to be proficient on the test. Um, the promotion score is six-eighty-three. So either that way, or the reading subscale score, um, was met. So sixty percent of our kids have already passed that hurdle, that big hurdle of third grade of getting the promotion score. Um, so then you can kinda, we'll obviously push those kids. We can narrow our focus then on those other forty percent as well. So that was, that was good to see.
Thank you.
Um, I attended the P B I S showcase with three of our staff members. Um, it was held in Dayton. We presented on our P B I S journey, Bryan Elementary, our P B I S journey. Um, P B I S stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And we had about a hundred and fifty people in our presentation. We took a show of hands to see, you know, are we talking teachers? Are we talking administrators? There were probably fifteen administrators, um, in our presentation. And the rest were, um, teachers. And we had a lot of questions. We became a Ohio-designated visitation site for those schools that are, um, on their P B I S journey. We are looking now more of our tier-two. Um, we're not quite there yet. We need to be trained in tier-two. But that's looking more, I think, the mental health piece and looking at, um, children that might be, need a little more services. So they did a great job. Ben Osterlin, Chelsea Cordy, and Sarah Bashall attended with me as well. Um, our first grade, uh, Christmas program is Thursday, December nineteenth, and at, at the Arts and Ed at nine o'clock. So if you want to see some little ones singing, um, they'll do a great job. Our sensory path is on its way. We do have, if you've been in the elementary, it's right next to the P B I S store. It is a lot of work. It is a lot of redoing the floor, taking the wax off, putting the wax on, taking these little strips and sticking them down. Um, so we did that little hallway. We've got two bigger hallways to go that we're going to work on over Christmas break. But I wanted to make sure I did a shout-out to the custodians because the work is so involved. So that'll be, um, anybody can use it. It's just not for the special education population. It's for anyone that needs a brain break, um, hop, skip, jump. It will consist of several exercises specifically designed to develop motor skills, balance, and spatial awareness, or if you just need to get out for a little bit. So we're super excited about that. Uh, we have our lunch and learn, our Bryan Elementary Lunch and Learn. We've not done one of these before. So for anyone that didn't get a chance to visit our elementary school, we welcome them, businesses, organizations, parents, grandparents. We welcome them to our school on Thursday, January thirtieth, for a half-hour guided tour and then a question-answer session with continuous updates on Bryan Elementary. And that's January thirtieth.
And that space is limited.
That space is limited, yes, to about twenty. We've had, we've had a couple sign up today, so that's good. We welcome that. And depending on how many show up, we can continue to have them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rary.
All right. Been a lot going on the last few days, um, at Bryan Millard High School. Um, just the other day, we had Keller Trucking come in. Just the other day, we had Keller Trucking come in and they brought a trucking simulator with them. And our careers courses went through and multiple kids went through. And they got to sit in this trailer that had three screens about that size. And they sat a chair and it was just like driving a big rig. And their whole idea was to promote their, their profession, their career, and just give them a taste of what it's like. I had the opportunity myself to try it and it's, it's real. I mean, it's, it was really neat. Your chair moves and the, the, I guess, the movements on the screen really make you feel because you're kind of in the middle of it, make you feel like you're a part of the simulation. So it's really neat. And some students were really greeted and could navigate through the gears and others had to use the automatic. I wish to help them through it, but it was really neat. And we appreciate them coming out to share that with our students and able to gravitate or two into that career path. So it's great to have them. Also, we had our students with special abilities. Had the opportunity, grades K through twelve, gave Christmas with the cops. Our local fire, police, sheriff, first responders here in the county. They took them to movie, to a movie. They got to see Frozen Two. And they were treated to pizza and popcorn and juice and water. And they got to experience that on Friday and they had a blast. So the movie theater was full last Friday and it was neat to see all the smiling faces. We also had a lot of great performances in the recent weeks. Just yesterday, our orchestra partnered with Mark Wood. If you had the opportunity to see that, just a phenomenal show. Talk about rocketing out. He walked out there with a lot, a lot of pep in your step after that energetic display. So that was a lot of fun to see. And then the choir was the week before and they did a phenomenal job as they always do with their holiday concerts. Congrats to both of those programs. We also celebrated our fundraiser prize assembly. Our students in grades six to eight who fundraised to help provide the finances for that annual Chicago trip, they celebrated all their sales and they got to make, or turn Mr. Arnold into a human ice cream sundae. We, we know he appreciated that. If you see any pictures on social media, he was wearing a full haz mask suit. No joke. Head to toe covered. He was, he looks pretty good. So, and with all that, our students are prepared for exams this week at the secondary level. So we wish them the best of luck and as we turn the corner into the month of January, we're just looking for more opportunities to continue to connect with the community. And we look forward to the scheduling processes that are coming up and a lot of opportunities on the horizon, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to take a moment just to recognize Syndra and Tom, who have been and contributed many, many hours to our community through our school board. And we are very appreciative of your service. And we, on behalf of the students and the staff at Bryan City Schools, would like to give you a little token of our appreciation to recognize your years of service. And I don't know if other board members have comments for Tom or Syndra, but.
I would just add to that, that very much appreciated of all the, as a coming on to this board two years ago, the, the times we've had conversation and the support and the guidance that you provided, I appreciated all of that, so thank you.
Thank you both for everything you've done over the years for a lot of time and effort into this.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
Just want to say thank you very much.
Thanks.
Second all of those comments, we do appreciate all the years of service you guys have presented. Certainly the leadership that you've provided to us newcomers. We really appreciate it. And I look forward to a conversation with you and Tom both after the fact. So you're not off the hook.
Thank you. Would either one of you like to say a few words or?
Well, I would like to say thank you to Tom for all of his guidance he gave me. His twenty-four years of experience is invaluable and is a great asset to Bryan City Schools Board of Education. And I'm sure he will be, he will be missed. A lot of knowledge out there in that head. Fine man. And I want to say thank you to the community for their support of me twelve years. And I'm very proud to have been a Board of Education member for those twelve years and thank those who voted for me the three times that I did run. And you haven't gotten rid of me. I appreciate that, that support. But I won't be here next month on January sixth. But thank you, thank you for, for everything, the opportunity, voters.
Tom, any last words?
Yeah. Thing that I guess I have reflected on here the last couple of weeks a little bit about was the fact that what Syndra just alluded to is about the relationship that we had on the previous boards. And, and the board as it exists now, obviously, is only two years old. So it's a little harder to take and, you know, come to a firm, you know, position on that. They're, they're obviously learning and growing. But the thing about the, the boards prior to this current board that I was on with Syndra, and Syndra was an integral part of all of this. We had a number of board members. Glenn Newcomerwick was on for twenty years and Emily was on for sixteen years. There was obviously a lot of continuity in the board and, and the position that the board took. The thing I think that I enjoyed the most was that although we all came to the table with our own particular opinion or perspective on issues, we were always able to take and have meaningful discussions, sometimes passionate discussions, but we would always come to consensus. And I think if you look back over the number of votes, there were very, very few times when the board didn't present a unified front on an issue, which I think is terribly important because it not only says something to the community, but it says something to the staff itself in terms of the level of support that they have from the board. Because, and everybody has seen examples of it in some of the surrounding school districts where you have three, two votes on issues. And, you know, you, you, people come away with a sense that, do they really know where they're going? And I like to think we made the right decisions and we were going in the right direction. But the one thing about it is we did it as a group. We did it together. And I think the, the only other thing that I would like to say is that the staff, I hope, fully appreciates just, you know, what a good job they are really doing here. You know, having been on the board now, what, twenty-four years, talking to a lot of administrators and our board members from other school districts, you come to realize that, you know, we were a good school district when I first came on the board twenty-four years ago. I think we are a lot better school district today. I have nothing but a high regard for the teachers. Obviously, my, Sue and our, my child, our children went through the Bryan City Schools and they came away with a quality education. I've got grandchildren that are going to the school now that I think are getting a quality education. And that's a total reflection on the quality of the, the staff that we have working here. And sometimes it's underappreciated. I just feel, you know, a lot of, feel grateful for being, having been part of it. So, yeah, it's been a nice journey. And I truly enjoyed it with Syndra as with the other board members.
So we have, again, just a small token. It's a plaque that shows and recognizes your years of service. So Syndra, from two thousand eight to two thousand nineteen, congratulations.
Thank you.
And Tom, from nineteen ninety-six to twenty nineteen, congratulations.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you all.
That's no doubt.
Very cool. One last comment. I happened to be the president the, the year we voted. The, the taxpayers voted to, to pass the levy to move forward with the new building and the redo of the elementary. And so this is fun. Thank you to have that on here. Okay, well, with that being said, this is my last opportunity to say I have, we do have a reason to go into executive session. For the, for A, underemployment and C, discussion of funding court action. I am going to invite our two new board elect members, if they would like to stay in our executive session. I will need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
Circle.
Thank you, Mike.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't see any action happening, but we'll report on it if there is. Again, thank you. Thank you to the viewers.